Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen workshop, May 16, 2016. Would you all rise and pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. I'd like to welcome Mr. Hicks to the board. Welcome, Ralph.
Thank you.
Tonight, we have a public hearing scheduled. It was scheduled for 6:00, so we'll open the public hearing at 6:12.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, it's not actually a public hearing. The public hearing for the tree removals has already taken place.
Right, ended.
This is a public meeting, which according to the statute, once a public hearing has been held, if there's any objections, we then have the opportunity to have a discussion at the Board of Selectmen meeting in a public meeting format. So you guys have in your packets some paperwork related to the issue near, I think it's 264 Charlton Road. And the residents are here, as well as you have information from Steven Tyler. He is here, as well as Evan Butler, the highway foreman, and also Mr. Ray Holmes, the tree warden. So again, this is the second one of these that you've had before. It's related to work that we're doing in preparation for repairs of 31 South Charlton Road. As part of that project, MassDOT performed what they call road safety audit and identified certain locations along the road using engineering templates and formulas to figure out, based on speeds and turning radius, which fixed objects, if you will, if they were within the right of way, within a certain distance off of the edge of pavement, could cause accidents or have caused accidents in the past and therefore were slated for removal. The hearing was held last year. We removed multiple trees along that route. And the ones that here are in question have not been removed. You have pictures in your packet. We also have copies of several accident reports, diagrams, photos, et cetera, et cetera. So with that, you have staff here to answer any questions that you may have. In addition, even though it's not a public hearing, my recommendation is to take input from the residents.
I agree.
Who wrote the letter.
Mary Ann, you want to address it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Name an address, just for the record.
Yeah. My name is Mary Ann Coppola. I live at 264 Charlton Road. And I'm here concerning the tree removal in front of my house. I just heard Adam say that the trees were causing accidents. The reason they want to remove the trees is because the trees are causing accidents, not the people, but the trees. There's one big tree at the corner of my house, and three people hit that tree and died. And that's one of the trees that he wants, Mr. Tyler wants, removed. And I don't want it removed, because if they don't hit that tree, they're going to come right into my bedroom. So the tree, for me, is like a fence protecting me. That's one. And then there's other trees close to my house that he wants removed. And I asked him not too long ago, a few minutes ago, how about the people across the street from me? Because he said they're going to widen the road. Well, there's no trees across the street from me, so why don't they widen the road that way? Why on my part of the property and not across the street? So I don't understand that. And another reason, these trees that he wants removed in front of my house, I'm on wetland. It's wet, wet land. I have a pond in the back of my house, not too far from my house. There's a pond from the wetland. And I had to put pipes around our house, because my cellar would, my house would float away. That's how wet the land is. I can't plant a garden until way late in the season, because the land is so wet. We can't get in there with our rototill, or we have a tractor. We can't go in there, because it's too wet. And the trees absorb the water, the ones he wants taken out. And the trees absorb the water. The water goes up into the atmosphere, and it cleans the air. And it also keeps my house quieter, those trees that he wants to take away. So he removes the trees. Now, I don't know what I'm going to do. I'm going to have to put a fence up or something, because these people going down where I live, they're going 60 miles plus, sometimes 70. They fly down this road. Once you get it fixed, I don't know what's going to happen. It's going to be a horror show. If you think people are dying now, there's going to be a lot of deaths on 264, on this road, on Route 31 South. So that's all I have to say. I don't want these trees taken down, you know? Not, there's one, well, all the ones in front of my house that he has ribbons on. Some of them are fairly new trees that my husband planted not too long ago, maybe 10 years ago. And now, and they're close to my house. They're not, I measured the distance, and they're more than 15 feet away from the edge of the road, because that's what they said, it has to be 15 feet. These are more than 15 feet away from the edge of the road. And I wasn't able to be at the meetings. I don't know what they plan to do. I don't know where the water's going to go, because it's wet. They start taking down these trees all down the road, you're going to have a water problem. We have a water problem now, and it's partially done on our property, further down where the other houses are across the street. Their water is going on our property, because it has no place to go. So if someone can tell me, what are they going to do with the water?
And I think, you know, and we'll try to get those answers, because I do have both Mr. Tyler and Evan here. Maybe we can answer those questions, so that you're more comfortable.
Yeah, all right.
You guys all read the letter. You do have the pictures.
Yes.
You have an opportunity to look at them. Steve, you want to address those questions? If you would, please.
Thank you, through the chairman, Steven Tyler, Highway Superintendent. Welcome, Selectmen Hicks.
Thank you. I'm a big Aerosmith fan.
Thank you.
You know, I saw him live once, and you had a lot more hair then.
I was shorter, too. So when you grow, your hair goes. That's what I've heard.
That's it.
So I've given you all, with regard to this matter, a little package. The first page is Ms. Coppola's letter. And all due respect to Ms. Coppola, this is not about her or her property or about me and my decisions or what trees I want. This is about the safety of Route 31. And I'll touch on Adam's statement with regard to, trees don't cause accidents. Trees contribute to fatalities. And what we're looking at with regard to the recommendations, and I'm keeping it short, because I've had a longer presentation with the board, but I'm happy to provide additional information to Selectmen Hicks if needed. But I'm going to kind of be a little brief when I talk about some of the things that you all have seen in the past. And that's the presentation that included the roadway safety audit. And it had numerous recommendations about removing roadside obstructions, roadside hazards. It had a lot of information about the design of recovery zones and the speed of this road and what the design of the recovery zone would be. And that typically the recovery zone along this road would be in the range of, say, 20 to 30 or 40 feet, dependent on the slope. And a gradual slope like what's at Ms. Coppola would be at the higher range. But, you know, we don't have the means and methods to take that number of trees, so we're looking at something that's, we're looking at trees that are already within our layout, that are already town-owned trees. That's why we're here at this hearing process. They're not private trees. They're town trees. And are within a range of about typically 10 to 15. And I don't think there's any that we're going for that are 20 feet away from the road. The other information we talked about was that, you know, we're trying to work with MassDOT to still get this thing funded one way or another through the district. And there are some expectations for us in advance of that potential work. And that potential work does include some level of widening. When you widen the road, you don't widen to one side. That's a complete redesign of geometry, horizontal and vertical. That's a major, major change. If you widen a little bit from one side to the other, you essentially maintain the crown. You basically keep the general horizontal and vertical geometry. And that's something that you can do cost-effectively. You typically don't relocate a roadway all to one side or another. There's all kinds of issues associated with that. You know, when you're going in and out of this curve and the next curve, it's not a straight, clear shot where you just pick it up and move it. The roadway safety audit did talk about some of the accident history, and there is a history there that the resident has spoken about. Again, we did talk about the recovery zone and the design of that. Some of the raw numbers we talked about before were fatal crashes in the United States. Right now, the fatal crashes in the United States is about 80 per day. And about 15 of those, or 19%, the fatality is related to striking a tree or a shrub once you leave the road. It is a high rate. The rate of fatalities for vehicles leaving, the percentage of fatalities for vehicles that leave the road and have a fatality, it's roughly 20% are tree or shrub-related. In 2013, there were 35,244 fatalities, deaths. Of those, 6,000, approximately 6,700 deaths were related to striking a tree or a shrub once you leave the road. In the resident's letter, she has stated, "Three people have hit that tree since I have been living here." What happens on trees of that nature, it's a repetitive occurrence. They happen inside of, outside of curves, like what I had presented before. The next page on this package, I have the accident report from one of those people that struck the trees. It was an 18-year-old boy by the name of Steven Sweet. And their family has been in touch with us with regard to that tree. They're not sad to see the tree go. They do have some requests related to that tree that we will try to abide as best as we can. If you go to the next page of the accident report, this is just one accident report that I've presented. On the bottom, I've highlighted the police officer's statement. "Vehicle was traveling south on Charlton Road at an estimated speed of 40 to 50 miles per hour when it appeared to drift off the road, striking a tree at 264 Charlton Road. The cause of the accident is undetermined." And then the next page is the sketch. This sketch is exactly how these things repeat themselves. You get a curve, and people, for what, either not paying attention or for whatever, they drift out of that curve, and they hit things in what we've talked about, the recovery zone. People need a recovery zone, so that when they leave the road, they have time to get control of their vehicle and get back onto the road. If you look at this sketch, the police officer's dimension to the tree is 7.1 feet. And if you continue on through, I've taken some pictures of the front. There are so many trees there, you won't even notice when we cut down the town trees. There are trees of all sizes behind those trees. And when vehicles leave the road, they don't leave the road and turn towards a house. They drift, and they do like what that is. So removal of that tree is not going to put a house or a property at risk. And if you continue on down through the photos, you can see on the top of the second page, that's a good shot of generally all the trees that we're trying to remove. Even that biggest tree that's in the middle there, we're not removing that one, because it's a little farther off the road. We're removing that one that's in the front. And the big one that I believe she's referring to is the one that's closest to the driveway, that is basically two trees in one, and has a little bit of the monumentation in front of it. And then there are some newer trees that were apparently, they appear to have been planted on town property. Well, they are on town property, but they appear like they were purposely planted by someone on town property without permission. So some of those trees, we're clearing out as well. Again, we're trying to stick within that, you know, safety recovery zone. We're trying to stay consistent up and down the corridor. And we're not singling out any particular property or resident. We're singling out trees, hazardous trees. And we're trying to make room for this recovery zone. With or without widening, an improvement to the recovery zone is necessary. And as was stated this evening, and I agree with it, when that roadway is resurfaced, people are going to be doing every speed possible on that road. And what you will see happening at the curves is what's on this sketch. People are going to drift out of the roads, and they're going to, and that's why we're trying to make this recovery zone safe. And that is the purpose of this tree removal program on Route 31. It is an arterial road. The other aspect with regard to wetlands, I am aware that the conservation agent has been called to this property with regard to the potential of this being wetlands jurisdictional. There is no wetlands jurisdiction with respect to these trees that we are removing. They are outside of wetlands jurisdiction. The other issues with regard to drainage, the drainage problems are already there. And they're not related to the trees. They're related to the drainage on the road. And that is a very wet area. And it's soaking wet on the other side of the street, from east to west side. The proposed design is to improve the drainage. And that's a separate, that's separate from the trees. The trees are safety. The drainage is safety as well, because you want to get the water off the road. But the drainage is also necessary for the long-term health of the road. So the intent is to do drainage improvements as well on that section of road. And so I think that that basically summarizes the key points. I can bring up any of the other previous tree hearing, if there's questions related to that, or answer any other questions with regard to this. But, long story short, after reviewing the information, the letter presented and going back and seeing the accident reports, those trees are a perfect example of why we're here, doing this program for the safety of the motors on Route 31.
Questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman? I have a couple. Mr. Tyler, so this tree's going to go, these two trees are going to go here. But you're leaving this one big tree here, the middle?
The one is kind of at an angle?
Yeah, yeah, that's the one.
Yes.
Okay. And then you're going to take some of these pines down that appear to have been planted, you said?
Yes.
Now, I don't get, I'm not too upset that they planted trees. I like trees.
Yep.
You know, I don't hug them, but I like them. And I'm wondering, the rationale for keeping this one big tree, and then we're going to take the ones farther back out? Because if somebody drifts off the road, they're going to hit, the odds of hitting this big tree are probably a little greater than the trees in the back. I guess what I'm saying is, I want to have it explain to me why the smaller trees have to go.
Well, that is a good question. And I'd be happy to go out and look at these trees again, but I think that the biggest tree is the one that's setting the furthest back. I think that that tree is, may very well be on the property line.
Uh huh. I mean, I drove by the house very slowly the other day when I knew we were going to be taking this up. I looked at it. And I understand, and I know, I know the Sweet family, and it's a tragic event what happened. And as much as I don't like cutting trees down, I mean, if this is going to save a life down the road, I'd rather see that happen, you know, than the tree being there. And God forbid it hits the house. I don't want to see that happen either. Houses can be replaced, they can be repaired, but a human life cannot be taken back. And I went to that young man's wake. And I know, also know what it's like to lose a child. And unconscionable that an 18-year-old should die in a split second, but it happened. And unfortunately, that tree hadn't been there. I know just what you're saying. I worked on the turnpike for a number of years. I went out to a couple of bad accidents where people either fell asleep or weren't paying attention or whatever, and they would drift off the road. And there are other accidents that didn't occur, because when they felt the rumble of the tires as the car left the road, they either woke up or regained, and then they were able to, you know, get out. And I know what you're talking about, the recovery zone. And I feel bad for the Coppolas, but I think that does need to be done. But I personally don't mind the little trees being there. And I don't mind, and personally, I don't mind the fact that they planted them, because although it's town property, it's often hard to know where town property is. And I probably planted a couple of trees in front of my house that's town property, in flowers and everything else. I mean, everybody does it. So that doesn't upset me particularly. So I would like to see if you could reconsider taking those smaller trees down. That I know will get bigger, but still, you'll still have your recovery zone.
Just to clarify, are those small trees, the ones that are just beyond the tree that's slated for coming, they're beyond that angled one? If you look at the bottom picture on page two?
I think if you look, those aren't marked.
Yeah, beyond the middle one, yeah. Those, I understand, have to go. I'm talking about the ones that are?
Yeah, but where are those located on the other picture?
They're behind the stump.
Those aren't these two?
I see the stump in the picture. I'm trying to get a mark for what they are. But they're to the right of the stump, if you can see that picture you're looking at.
So of those?
I asked you of the driveway?
If you, it's tough from these pictures, because of the angles. I know I took the opportunity, Ralph took the opportunity. Chris, I know you drive out there every day, because you live there, and I know you went down. But the angle of these pictures really don't represent?
They don't represent at all. It just gives an overall presentation.
So I don't want to cloud, I don't want to cloud the issue, because it's not, and when you were there, Ralph, if you pick up that sightline, you can pretty much see.
That's where I'm going with those two smaller trees. They appear to be beyond, but they're still, they're still within that 10 to 15.
Exactly.
That you're talking about.
Well, those two, I understand, if I may, Mr. Chairman. It's the ones in back that I don't, I don't.
Behind here, Ralph, over on here?
Yeah, yeah, I don't see the harm with those.
I don't think those were marked.
No, that's not.
I don't think those were marked. It was only the ones, if I remember right, when?
I know, I know.
Ray, am I wrong or right? I'm just going to ask you from here. The ones from?
Okay, cool, thank you.
From Cranberry Meadow Road. If you get that sightline, but when you get over towards the driveway, those aren't marked, I don't believe.
The ones that are marked are past that double O that?
That's what I thought, okay. Farther down.
Okay, okay.
Directly in front of her property.
Right.
Okay, so it's not these, it's not these?
No.
As far as they're down there, it makes sense.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, Ralph, the other side, the other side of the driveway, right.
Yeah, yeah.
So these are?
Yes, sir.
There is a highway following, driving back.
There is?
It's right here.
So they're beyond the driveway?
Oh, yeah, okay, I see it.
Beyond the driveway.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. So there still would be a little buffer there for their house with the noise? Because, I mean, I planted trees in front of my house for that same reason 20, 20-odd years ago, and put my house back from the road deliberately, because I want to do away from the road. So I know, I know how they feel about that. I understand that, you know?
If you look at page one that Steve had, you can see the tree line. There's quite a tree line. But there will be?
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
You're saying that the recovery zone is going to be my house. That that's going to be the recovery zone. So if they don't hit the trees, they hit my house. And that's all right. That's what you're saying. That's all right for them.
I don't think we are, but I mean, and?
I mean, I don't feel sorry for the drunks. I feel bad that they have a problem, but they can do something about it. But I don't think I should have to pay the price, because they're drunk and they're going to hit my house. I can replace my house, you know, and they'll be fine. I don't go for that, you know? I like the trees there. They hit the tree, that's their fault. You know, they were drinking, they were partying. They come down from Bacon Hill Road, they have parties up there. They come down Bacon Hill Road, they make the turn and smash right into that tree.
And not to debate it, Mary Ann, I'm not going to debate it other than I agree that, you know, that becomes a public safety. But I also don't think that when you have an 18-year-old get killed, that necessarily he was al partying. And nothing in the police report that I could find even stated that.
No, but you have a true word.
Mary, I live on the road, believe me. I take people out of the cars. I know what it is up there.
I know, but you're on the other side. You're a kind.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
I just, you know, I understand your feelings, but really, I mean, one human life, an 18-year-old young man, just starting off his life, I don't want to read in the paper in five or 10 years, if I'm still around, that another young person has lost their life who wasn't drinking. You read the accident report, there's, it clearly states there were no signs of that. I mean, I, I got to say that to you.
And again, we're not going to debate this over and over again.
If he didn't hit the tree, what would he hit, if the tree wasn't there?
Well, yeah, and the projection is with, be beyond your house.
The idea is he's supposed to be able to steer himself out of it. And when he starts to feel the wheels going off, going off the road, the rumble, you know, we've all hit the rumble strip here and there once in a while. Well, when you feel that, hopefully, if he fell asleep or whatever, even if he's drunk, maybe he'll be able to steer back onto the road and not hit your house. You're far enough back that I hope there'd be enough time for him to steer out or at least stop before he gets to your house. I can't guarantee that, but, you know, your house is pretty far back.
No, it isn't. It's not really.
No, it looks like it is.
I know, but you go there and you see it.
Well, okay.
Again?
I did. I still think it's farther back than somehow.
Again, I think there's other trees beyond that that would bounce and take some of that. And I did take the time to really extensively look. I know you went down there. It's pretty clear. But again, you know, if anybody, and we did this for Mr. Barnes, if anybody has a complaint about a house being too close to the road, it would be him. And unfortunately, you know, because of what we're trying to do with this road and get that far ahead, I think that's what we're looking at, is where do we go? If there's any other questions?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I had the same question that Ralph had, was on those extra trees, if we were just enforcing some kind of tree bylaw that, you know, that I'm not familiar with, or were those trees also in the safety zone? I'm hearing that they are. So, I mean, we've been pretty consistent here on the way we've been doing this effort. So I've got no questions.
I have a question for Steve. Steve, what could you recommend for people in Ms. Coppola's situation? Or even people whose houses are closer to the road, who are interested in protecting their property but not presenting a fatal, potentially fatal obstacle? I mean, obviously, guardrails are designed to, you know, to guide people back onto the road or to prevent them from pitching over. Is there a, I mean, fences, are there some, are there some obstacles that would protect property without, but at the same time not, you know, costing, you know, terrible injury or death? What is the philosophy with sort of traffic and highway engineering? Is there something you offer to people? Or does the state accept certain kinds of slowdown features?
Well, the answer, you know, you can always do a traffic calming type of approach. You could do that.
What did you say?
Traffic calming, speed humps and things of that nature. You could certainly, you know, pay additional and put rumble strips on your ends of the road, that type of thing. Those types of things are effective. Payment markings, keeping your, having your road in good condition where you can keep your pavement markings on the ground is a very good thing. Reflectorized pavement markings. Signage, guardrail in itself is a roadside hazard.
Ah, I see.
But you use guardrail when it's protecting from even greater hazards. And like you say, like, let's say?
I see, the water or something.
A deep trench or water or, and it does, the goal is to try to deflect you back onto the road. But, you know, there are issues with guardrails. Some of the end treatments have raised questions about their contributing to fatalities. Signage, like arrows, such as what we put up on North Spencer Road, that type of stuff. You have repetitive situations. If you have friction situations, like a higher friction pavement, some of those things are expensive. High friction pavement is very expensive. You use that when you have a history, and it's used like where curves, where people are constantly sliding out of the curves. They'll put in this, it has more of a stone base into the aggregate, and you have to refresh it within a few years. But it does, has been shown to be effective. So there are some design solutions along that lines. In this area, it's really kind of a gradual curve. You know, maybe something coming in and out of the curve, but those things still happen from time to time. It's certainly not a curve like the one on North Spencer Road, where you have all of those. the cost to bear with those, any little curve one way or another, it's usually where you see some type of repetitive. And in this situation, what I see is a tree that's right within the recovery zone coming out of a curve, because it's repeating itself. The driver that hit that tree, I don't think would ever have hit the house, it would either have hit one of these trees further up ahead or potentially recovered and gotten itself back onto the road, in my opinion. Don't, you know, wasn't in the vehicle, don't know what the circumstances were, why he was out of attention and off that road for that long of a distance, but he's also an eighteen-year-old, may have panicked. There's all kinds of things that could have happened.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Just, I, when I worked on the turnpike when I was in college, the worst mile on the turnpike is the sixty-five mile marker westbound. It's, there's been a number of fatalities there, I went out to a fatality there, I got there twenty minutes before the state police, I had to crawl in the vehicle, feel the young man's pulse, and he had been drinking, he was in the Navy, coming from Newport. I don't care if he was drinking, he didn't deserve to die, nobody deserves to die. But those gradual curves, they're worse than one that comes right up on you, because one comes right up on you, you know, you gotta slow down unless you're passed out or something, and then you're gonna go off the road. But people maybe who are a little tired, groggy, inexperienced driver gets himself in that kind of a situation, he needs more time to be able to pull him or herself out of it. And I just wanna state that, and if, and if by some chance, you know, you can do that study, I don't wanna repeat it because I don't think I could pronounce it, and maybe we could do something rather inexpensive, like reflectors going in there to kinda warn drivers ahead of time, hey, something's going on here. Give them a little, give them an idea to be a little more attentive to what they're doing, that might help too, and prevent cars from going off the road and onto the Coppola property. So that's just a suggestion, but I'd like to see that done, I'd like to see something like that done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just one final thing, I mean, I would say to the Coppolas the same thing we said to the folks at the hearing, you know, earlier in the spring, and that is, we're very sympathetic to, you know, to the, to the issue of the trees, and it gets very personal when it's a tree that you've planted, or a tree that you've had there a long time, and you, but we have no choice to come down on the side of public safety in these decisions, and in the work with, you know, and to make sure that we're doing it consistently, it's not arbitrary, and that we keep the public safety number one, and if there, I hope that drainage does improve as a result of the work on the road, and so that won't be as the water disaster that this Coppola's predicting, but I, but we really have to be consistent on the public safety side.
Okay. Anything else? Just in summary, Steve, so the water comes down Bacon Hill, I know the area very well, and there's a culvert, used to be right there in the corner, runs across, so I would tend to believe that, not the engineer, but I would tend to believe that if we were gonna redo that road because of the softness of the sides, you're gonna redirect that anyways, would be my guess, I mean.
What we have proposed there now is a series of catch basins connected by subdrain.
Shooting across.
Because you have a pretty, and what I think is the, you know, part of it was the development of Blueberry Lane.
Right.
And the water that traditionally came off of Blueberry Lane is now kinda trapped there at the road.
Right.
So what we, what we have proposed is a series of catch basins that would connect to subdrain and connect to the Blueberry Lane catch basin. There's kind of a high spot there, so some of it goes one way, some of it goes the other way. And it would either go towards the Blueberry Lane catch basin, or back to the north towards the Bacon Hill kinda drain.
Where they redid that one, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we did do some drainage already, they're just gonna redirect it, so if you didn't go over there, let's see it, so.
Internet.
No other questions?
No.
I'd entertain a motion on this.
You don't need to close the public hearing, you can make a motion on the, on the action.
Right.
I'll make a motion to remove the trees as stated, and to have Mr. Tyler do the study that he mentioned, you can tell Brenda what it is.
Okay.
And see if there, we can do some things there to help prevent accidents, such as a rumble strip, or those stand-up, what do you call them, reflector that go in the middle of the road? Because I do think it's a dangerous curve, like I said before, those gradual curves sometimes are worse than the dramatic ones.
Tough intersection.
Pardon me?
Tough intersection.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and, you know, I, I wish we'd have to cut down any trees, but I think if we're gonna get the state money, but more importantly than the state money, if somewhere down the line this is gonna save a life, I think we have to be cognizant of the fact that a human life is more important than personal property, I'm sorry.
So there's Mr. Hicks' motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Tyler, how long will it take you to do that study, do you think?
Well, you're referring to a roadway safety audit that was already done.
Yeah, sorry.
I think along the lines of your suggestion, I think it's just a matter of looking at it, incorporating it into design, whether or not we wanna bear the cost, or if we do it selectively, or in whole land, or in part.
I'll give you, I'll give you a call later in the week, if you don't mind.
I don't want.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have an action item, vote to waive the forty-five day requirement for the Spencer Eastbrook Field Regional School District on their E and D capital use.
Two things, one is you have one letter in your packet that's dated April 29th that refers to $590,721 in E and D for various capital items. That include, on the second page of that, if I can flip it.
Gave the breakdown.
They gave a breakdown, roof replacement, security upgrades, phone system, asbestos abatement, et cetera. Today, I received a second letter, I'm gonna pass out now, for additional use of E and D in the amount of $117,000, to be added to that $590,000, to get almost up to $700,000. And that $117,000 would be added to the asbestos abatement portion of the lineums that was previously provided to you on the letter dated April 29th. So just like the letter on April 29th, the letter that I received today, dated May 13th, the action for you folks is to either hold a town meeting within forty-five days to disapprove, or to waive that requirement of forty-five days. By waiving that forty-five days, you allow them to move forward and go ahead with the projects right away, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna recuse myself, because I'm chairman of Spencer Eastbrook Regional School District School Building Needs Committee, and this'll be something that we will be working on as a committee. Even though, obviously, I have nothing personal to gain for it, I think in light of the fact that I am on that committee, I should recuse myself.
Okay.
Should I explain why?
Totally noted. Thank you, Mr. Hicks. To the board.
I, I think the school is in desperate need of these repairs. Walk through, this is for the David Proudey Roof.
Correct.
And the asbestos at David Proudey, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I took a tour, and the school's in desperate need of these efforts. So I am, got no problem waiving the forty-five day requirement.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, they need to move on this as quickly as possible with the next school year in mind. And also, just to clarify, just, and just to repeat, none of these, this, this total, nor the, nor the addition that the letter refers to affect our assessment or anything like that, this is all taken care of.
Is there, there.
It's like cash.
Just to, just to wanna make sure that's, that gets out there.
According to the Chapter 70 statute, they're required to ask us, part of regional school districts, they're required to ask us for essentially not permission, but if you have any objections, go ahead and hold a, hold a hearing, I mean, hold a public town meeting.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, this is recorded, I know the answer, but Eastbrook Field, let's get a similar notification, will they not?
They should, yeah.
They should, absolutely.
There's been some noise on social media about, again, on these capital issues, that they're being ignored, so.
And I just think that the abatement ran a little heavier than what they thought, so that number from $150,000 ends up being $267,000, $279,000, which is money well spent, in my opinion, to take care of that problem, so.
Right. And these are all discussed at public meetings for the school committees, so.
Absolutely.
It's not a surprise. Mr. Chairman, make a motion to waive the forty-five day requirement for the Spencer Eastbrook Field Regional School District for E and D capital use.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
I'm abstaining.
One abstention.
Didn't have to, but I'd rather be safe than sorry.
Then there's.
Besides, I teach an ethics course at Worcester State University.
What's the schedule on that course?
You wanna take?
Perfect. Town election follow-up.
Yeah, gentlemen, the reason, I just had this on here because of, in case you wanted to have any discussion, whether, whatever the results were that came out of last Tuesday, figured I'd have it on there, so if you had any commentary, anything you wanted to bring up, questions moving forward, obviously, there'll be a lot of work to do moving forward. Next step is looking at engineering, designing, and prioritizing, planning, and such, in preparation for a borrowing that would occur next budget season, next year, so. The, the Article 20, I believe it was, was handed off to Senator Goby, certified vote was recorded by the town clerk, gave her a sealed certification to take to the State House to register that bill. So we'll get updates from Ann as much as possible moving forward. But if anyone had any comments or questions for the public, or about the process.
Mr. Chair, I was impressed with the percentage voter turnout for the election, we had other issues that I'm sure helped contribute to that, but it was good to see a democratic process work well, you know? And John, I had a conversation after this, and I think it, it, it needs stating that, you know, this is no celebration of a, of a tax increase to our citizens. We know, we've always said that there is gonna be pain involved here, we understand that, but we, in all, same vein, I also, to, you know, thank the citizens for supporting this effort. I think in the long run, this is, this helps our town move forward, and it helps us start the improvement on other fronts as well. So I'd like to thank the voters for doing this improvement ourselves. We, we pulled up our bootstraps, we're doing this ourselves, we don't have anyone in the state managing the project for us, so this is all ours. So we're doing it at our level, by ourselves. So thank you.
I would, yes, Tony said, we talked about this, and I'm sure you have no misunderstanding, and we, you know, our, the fact that we're pleased with it, it's pleased with the idea of addressing a desperate need, I mean, a very visible need in our community. And, you know, you know, going forward, I think it starts to set a different tone, I think it's, 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 the perception of Spencer is improved when, you know, people see the attention we're giving to, to a need like this. And I, I think it, credit to everybody who was involved in getting the word out, we talked about successful debt exclusions in the past, and, you know, really, it comes down to communication, having a chance for people to come and ask questions, we give, or several opportunities to learn the facts, and that was evident from, you know, from the discussions that what we heard people say, you know, really, you know, change our minds and the best route to go, and I think that's, that's the beauty of the process, you start out with one idea, you, you know, you incorporate what people say, and you, you know, you're trying to balance that out with the need, which was, you know, undeniable. So I'm, I give a lot of credit to the people of Spencer, who, you know, who have been historically very, you know, dubious of, you know, some of the proposals, you know, but I think there was a recognition that this, this had to be addressed, and if it not now, when, and at what greater price. So I'm pleased that we can move forward on this, and everybody's gonna look forward to seeing what the plans are as they emerge over the summer. Right now, we, a lot of, a lot of paperwork needs to be done in planning, so thank you to the citizens of Spencer.
Okay.
I'd just like to add that if, once the project starts gaining some steam and momentum, if we can, please list it on the website for the townsfolk, so they, so they know what's going on.
And I think as you.
When things are going project-wise.
Yep.
Like we're doing Mechanics Street and everything else.
Exactly what I was gonna say, as you know, we have mailing lists, we do a pretty good job of communicating, we do reverse 911 calls when paving is occurring, what roads will be closed, if any. I, you know, just, for example, forward you guys the schedule today for the paving schedule for Mechanics Street. We have people, we invite people if they'd like to be on our mailing list, so what you saw today was an email blast essentially from Steven Tyler to anyone that wanted to be involved in notifications regarding Mechanics Street. Obviously, we can, with reverse 911, we can target certain neighborhoods and not do email blasts, or phone blasts to everybody, so I think it's a great idea, and I think we've been pretty good at it, and we'll continue to try and do so.
Agreed.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't know that we can, we don't have, when we do reverse 911, we don't do town lines?
You can pick an area.
I didn't realize that, that's cool.
Mr. Hicks.
Yeah, I just wanna add that I was very pleased that that passed, I was also pleased that there are gonna be changes in the school committee. I think Spencer is starting to get a reputation as a community that, you know, doesn't value the quality of life, and I certainly don't feel that way. And I think both the changes in the school committee and the roads project passing send an indication to would-be home buyers, because this does affect our home values, and to citizens in general, that the town does indeed care about itself and does want to present itself well. I think when the Main Street project starts next year, that's going to be quite evident. And certainly, when roads like Route 31 start to look the way that they should look, and when the schools start to head in a little, a different direction, if you will, folks, the word is out there that we're, we're on the move, we're changing. I think everything that happened on that election day, and especially the turnout, is very impressive, that turnout of that size would approve a debt exclusion of that magnitude. It goes contrary to what usually happens in most, most communities. Usually, you wanna have a small turnout for a debt exclusion or an override, and having the big turnout, I, I just think, hooray. It's really a new, I think Spencer's turned the corner, and we're gonna start heading in the right direction. And as someone who's lived in town most of his life, and God willing, will die in this town, I'm hoping that, you know, we are in that, we are gonna make the best out of what we're doing, and I'm sure that we will. So thank you. And thank the board for putting that question on the ballot, and I also wanna thank you, board members, for supporting it, because sometimes selectmen kinda sit on the fence, and, oh, we'll put it on the ballot, but, and then they won't say which way they, they wanna go. And in this case, you did, and I gotta think that that probably also played a role in helping to get that passed. So thank you.